So I will call the meeting to order at 7:03. Any changes to the agenda? Now, first point of business is to approve the minutes of the October 2nd meeting, which we should have done in November, but we couldn't do it in November, so we need to do it now. Any? Want to make a motion?
A motion to approve the October 2nd, 2023 meeting.
Perfect. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Review the discussions and confirm the actions of November 6th meeting. And I guess that would be, we took notes, but were there, and Jane got the notes out to everybody, but there were no votes, no action items that were taken. So does anybody want, have any comments about the notes that were taken? No? Can I have a motion to accept the notes as Jane submitted them?
I'll make a motion to accept the notes that Jane submitted for the November 6th meeting.
Okay. A second? I'll second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention?
Abstaining. I don't see the minutes on those notes. I can't. When did she sign that?
About four days after the meeting.
Kevin emailed me.
I probably have a copy here in my things.
Kevin? On the website. I just, Kevin just emailed me that he did not have the link, so I just sent it to him, so he should be zooming in.
Okay.
Shortly. We'll see.
Yeah, Kevin. I, reversed my abstaining and agrees.
Okay. So for, reports, mail and email, I did send around the email that Kurt has resigned. And I will get out a notice about an opening on the Planning Commission for the Reading Reformer, and I'll probably also put it in the front porch forum a couple of times. Anywhere else you think it should go?
No, I don't think so.
Those store enough?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Kevin should be, there he is.
And where should, should we have the responses come to Planning Commission or the Select Board? Usually they come to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Select Board.
Correct.
Is that a good idea?
I think that's, I think that that's the way we did the last time. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, we can submit any candidates to the Select Board.
In other mail, Kalista left me a stack of stuff. So one of them was the letter to the, that the Select Board did to the state, which we already endorsed for the solar panels at the firehouse, and a copy of the letter that went to the Public Utilities. If anybody wants to read that, want to read that?
Uh, no, maybe we can make copies of it, we can put that in the later.
Okay. In fact, I could probably scan it and email it out.
Yeah, that works.
And the other thing I just am looking now is something from the town of Weathersfield. And they're making some changes to their zoning bylaws. And so they are notifying surrounding towns. And it's a notice of a public hearing. It's going to be on Martin Hall on January 8th, Monday, January 8th. Geographic, the statement of purpose is, the purpose of making the proposed amendment is to prohibit the use of private airstrips and helipads in the town of Weathersfield. And that's the thing that they're changing. And it will affect all lands within the town of Weathersfield. And it impacts the zoning districts, zoning district standards and definitions. There is a Zoom link, if anybody's interested, it's WeathersfieldVermont.org, home, and then public meetings. And the Zoom. Now that appears to be the one that, yeah, private, and so that's the only thing that they're changing, it looks like, and it's, and it's under all of their, you know, conditional use, permitted use, and all that sort of stuff. And added to the uses not permitted is going to be a private airstrip or helipad. And that's the change that they're making. I guess if you need any more, you could look at the Weathersfield site. There's one more here. State of Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development, Department of Housing and Community Development, Municipal Planning Commission by law reform. And this is the Act 47 stuff that Martha has been priming us on? And I can also scan this and send it out. And that would be our mail. Regional Planning Commission. We just today closed finally on the building, so we are no longer landlords. We are now tenants and able to do lots of planning stuff that we're supposed to be doing instead of worrying about tenants and buildings and things like that. The building was sold to Big Sky Properties, which is Matt Priestley in Springfield. And he will be converting parts of the building and some of the outlier buildings to apartments, and we will be revamping part of the first floor where Enos Construction was into a conference room. Also, at our last meeting, we went over some of the stuff that's the Act 250, the draft of revisions. And that's going to take a lot, a lot of work because it's still kind of messy. There is a priority list that Mark developed that is the priorities for the district. And number six in the priority list involves Reading, and that is the engineering evaluations and then project implementation of the water and/or wastewater solutions for Weathersfield and Reading. So it's number six on the priorities out of 12. So I guess that would be a move, I, the last Select Board meeting, you know, quite a couple of months ago, I thought they were going to talk about the engineering study, and then I never heard anything more about it.
The last Select Board, there was a presentation on the, on the wastewater survey results. I think it was less than around half percent, 50% of the eligible properties responded in some, in some capacity to the survey. And I think it's supposed to be come January or February, there's supposed to be some other sort of meeting or presentation around that.
There was nothing from the engineers, though?
The engineer did make the presentation.
Oh.
So, I mean, it's, it's in the very early stages. They're trying to get a sense of where the, where the septic systems are, where the well, where the wells are, to get a sense of, has there ever been a failure in that property owner's knowledge or history of living there?
Who's committed, who's not, if there's interest, if there's not.
Okay, I thought that there was.
Could I ask a question, Kathy? This is Kevin.
Go.
Now, Mark, you saw the presentation by the engineers, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, the presentation with a bunch of flipboard maps and so forth?
Yes.
What did you think of that presentation?
Well, I mean, it was hard to see some of that. There is, and I haven't been able to sort through it. There is, Kalista does have a binder in the office that you can look through it. My, my thought was that it didn't seem like the Select Board was too terribly engaged in asking the engineer really any other questions as to how they might be able to assist in getting a more complete, comprehensive survey results. It was just simply that some people responded that they don't have problems, or they don't feel a need for it. But we, we anecdotally know that some people are responding that way because they're fearful that if they're opening up that Pandora's box, and they know that they're out of compliance in terms of their septic system or, or water, that, you know, maybe they'll get into trouble, or maybe they'll have to bring it up to compliance. So I had hoped that maybe there was going to be some sort of discussion that this was, you know, this was an anonymous type of survey where there wouldn't be any sort of retribution or consequences, but we just really need as much participation and data as possible. That was, that was my take it.
Excellent.
Did, yeah. Were you able to watch the recording?
I was at the meeting too, and they said that this was phase one, and phase two is going to be a little more, more information. They also said that there could be multiple things done, not just like new septic, there could be a combination of things, and also Marie was there, and she said that there's a tremendous amount of funding right now for towns to rehabilitate their town, you know, water systems. And that somebody was going to look into it. I don't remember who it was. But maybe if people in the town know that, that they'll be more willing to give more information about their septic, but I think that, I do remember them, the engineers saying that they were happy with the amount of people that responded. So, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. I might say that most of this data is probably collected remotely, and there, and it's phase one, that there is probably no boots on the ground at this point. Does anybody disagree with that?
No, I would, I would concur with that. Just, you know, emails, mailings, some sort of response, but no, necessarily no onsite discussions. Some, you know, some haven't even, you know, you have to be able to somehow grant access that there's going to be some sort of site visit. But I think there needs to be, my impression is some sort of intermediary on the town side with the engineer, going door to door with the community members in order to sort of get as much valuable information as possible.
Excellent. I, I would tend to say that if, if you do any planning remotely without engaging the people who are affected, then you're going to have future controversy down the road.
Absolutely.
So if the Select Board is not engaging in this project, like you said, Mark, there needs to be somebody who is a essentially unbiased intermediary to shepherd the whole project. And ideas, I mean, the ideas have to be, I hope, somewhat out of the box in some cases with small villages. That's all I have on that topic, which is.
Yeah, I agree, Kevin.
Okay, another project that's going on involving Mark is, there is a affordable housing project that's taking place in Windsor, and that's with Evernorth and the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust. They're looking at a site at Central and Main Streets in Windsor. And it is currently a brownfield site. The estimate is $800,000 to $900,000 to clean up the remediation for a chemical called PAH, which I have written down here someplace, but they have a grant for $625,000, and Mark is going to give them a revolving loan of $250,000 at 1% interest for 20 years to develop that remediation so that they could start on the affordable housing project. And I think, I think that's, that was all of the regional planning. So Energy Board, Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. The Reading Energy Board 2023 report is in. Some of the highlights briefly, of course, are where the solar, are, you know, the solar fair. And another highlight, of course, is the efforts to put in a small solar field at the firehouse. And you mentioned earlier that there was a letter that was sent to the public, by the Public Utility Commission, or Certificate of Public Good. At any rate, that's, that's moving forward, not thanks to me, thanks to Brian Callie and Bill Newcomb. They've gone through the firehouse as well with an energy audit, as well as a couple of energy audits elsewhere in town, like the town hall itself. And then on the solar array proposal, a transformer upgrade will probably be necessary. There will be money in the agreement to, to change that. Let's see what else. Anyway, our weatherization projects are continuing to move onward. And the budget request for the Reading Energy Board has gone in, and it hasn't changed much. It is about the same as last year, and that is for materials such as door sweeps, insulating jackets for hot water, other insulation products, foam. So really, it's, it's a very minimal budget of something like $900 bucks. The grant that was received for, by the Energy Board will also include the purchase of an infrared gun as an education tool for people to see where the leakage is in their buildings. Martha, you might have a little bit more to add, but that's about all I have.
I do get set up, so I wasn't.
Okay. That's fine. I have one more thing I forgot to mention here, and that's, we also got a $50,000 grant to look at the Windsor State Prison grounds for uses and cleanups of what can be done with that property. And so they have hired some consultants to go out there and sort of survey the grounds and see what, what buildings may be rehabable, and what buildings just need to be taken down, and what else can be done, and what kind of businesses they could sort of entice to move into that, that land. Zoning Administrator, I heard nothing from Bob, so that brings us to the ZBA, Mark.
Okay. There has been, I've been in correspondence a little bit with Bob Allen. There has been, last month, a an application by the Hall Art Foundation for a conditional use permit for the berms that have been constructed and the flood wall. The application Bob sent to John Broker Campbell of the the state, the regional flood manager, who is supposed to be giving him feedback as to what needs to be done. And I received a email from Bob Allen, which I'll just quick read, which was received this, this past Sunday, December 3rd. "Mark, I know this is a late reply. However, I have been trying to get in touch with John Broker Campbell to get an update on the permit applications. His comment on Friday was that he had gotten sidetracked, but he had a letter of response for the hall permit on his desk. So far, I have not received it and only assumed that it was a letter he mailed and not emailed. Additionally, he has two other permit applications to review, and I expect him to have another next week. I will let you know if any of those will need a ZBA review when I get his response. Regards, Bob."
Recording in progress.
Any? Can you turn off your speaker and your mic?
Yes. In fact, I did.
What?
Both speaker, unmute yourself, and then also.
I am muted, and I did turn off my speaker. I don't hear you.
Yeah, great. That's the only correspondence that I have. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
There's nothing to say until you get the, the word back from John Broker Campbell, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And that just will be coming shortly?
Yes.
What's the response time going to be before? In other words, if, if Robert gets the letter, what's today, Monday? Say he gets the letter Wednesday. But we don't meet for another whole month.
Right.
So how does that work in a timeline?
I would have to check, I mean.
Is there a timeline for the, a response to, to the, what Broker Campbell has to say?
I, I think it's going to be either that, that there needs to be a conditional review, a conditional permit review process, which is then going to trigger our hour, or if nothing is required, then it's.
It's a moot point.
It's a moot point.
Okay.
So, but I think we'll, we'll have to wait to hear what the, what the states.
Okay, I just wanted to, yeah, I, I thought that's, we were, we were sort of spinning our wheels.
But if anything happens, I can't imagine it's going to happen before February is meeting.
Okay. All right, that brings us.
As far as I'm hearing.
And as far as I'm hearing.
Yeah. Two unfinished business continue to work with Martha, now that she's here, with her computer.
So last time, we talked about things that we were not able to vote on.
Right, and so that's what I wanted to pick up, because I think we sort of had a consensus on a lot of things. And so if you could review them and we could put them to a vote now, that would be.
Yeah, we started with parking last time. Let me just share. Oh, am I allowed to share my screen?
And you got my email about the thousand, everything. He said that was just what Mark was recommending at the time.
Email about what? Thousand what?
Thousand square feet per parking space for museums. One space per thousand square feet.
And Martha had asked why it was, everything seemed to be a thousand.
Well, I think Mark had asked.
And so I, I contacted Steve, and I said, is there a reason that came up, why? And he said he just thought that that was what Mark was recommending at the time.
Mark, not to be confused with Mark.
Yeah, Mount Scutney, I should say that maybe, huh?
Okay, so up on the screen is the parking. This is the section of Act 47 that has to do with parking. And then we looked at the section on parking itself. Basically, Act 47 says, without municipal water and sewer, you have to have one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, and they round that up. So I had added, I had changed your definition of parking space, make to make it 20 feet long rather than 18, which is consistent with other parking requirements. That's the usual size. And then this is a new section in red. I think before it just jumped right into parking requirements without really any introductory paragraph. So I think everyone was okay, as I recall, with that. I mean, the only question I remember hearing about this was about the museum. Only when I wrote, you know, something. There is, I know last time I forgot to bring in, there was this.
Did we, did we bring up museum parking specifically in the last?
Yeah.
We did?
Yeah.
I don't remember that.
So there's this handy dandy thing that I forgot to bring last time, which includes some suggested parking for various uses. It doesn't have museums. So I sent you separately a few other towns, which ranged from, well, I have have a handout if anyone wants a copy, but in Danville, it's one and a quarter spaces per 300 square feet, which seems like a lot of parking. And goes up to new spaces per 1,000, and Richmond, one per 700 square feet, and in all bands. Well, yours is a lesser requirement than the other ones that I found, but I mean, whatever you issued a permit on already, that's an existing permit, you know, so this wouldn't change. If you change this, it wouldn't change any existing permits. It would just be going forward. So I don't know if your existing museum parking is adequate.
So, so to, I'm just on the Hall Art Foundation, they. So so to, I'm just on the Hall Art Foundation, they in their uh in their website, they say there's approximately six thousand square feet of museum quality exhibition space. And I would say they probably in the they probably have fifteen to twenty parking spaces.
Okay.
Um and there's an overflow as well, so I would think if it's, if we have one parking space per thousand square feet, that's
You're more than covering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So we good with that?
Yeah, uh I am.
Kevin?
Yeah, um I'm fine with that. Everybody else is as well, I believe. Um, good.
So we can, we're in agreement to make that change? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Parking space per thousand square feet. Correct.
Yes, this is.
For every thousand square feet of exhibit area and one parking space per employee. That's what it says for libraries and museums. There were some other things that were changed. For restaurants, it's one space for every four seats instead of every three. For professional office space, it's one for every four hundred square feet instead of every two hundred and fifty square feet. I crossed out guest house because you don't have that listed as a use, so. At the museums and then theaters. And then I added something about accessible spaces because you didn't have anything in there about ADA accessibility. And then, so one option you might want to consider when someone is establishing a new parking lot or expanding an existing parking lot is whether you might want to repair uh parking for bicycles, you know, or some sort of secure storage for bicycles to encourage that.
I'm on that one too, good one.
I support that.
And then you uh you actually started off, I think, with a definition for parking space, yeah. So you could move that to the definitions section.
Move what?
The section three point seven parking loading, it starts off by saying a parking space is defined as a space which is at least nine feet wide and twenty feet long. You could just put the definition for parking space into the definitions section.
Yeah, instead of up here.
Right, yeah, right. So then the other thing we talked about last time was these limitations on bylaws. These are the list of things that you can regulate, but only in certain respects and only if it doesn't interfere with the intended functional use. A lot of these are state so state facilities, locally owned facilities, schools, houses of worship, hospitals, solid waste management, hazardous waste man- management, and the new one that they've added is emergency shelters. So.
Yeah, aligning it with what the state.
Right.
This is, I think, ideal.
Right, I mean, and you asked about the links there under hazardous waste and um.
So um Martha, it um I have a question about uh houses of worship, are those uh places of worship? Uh what's, it's the same parking for that structure as a museum?
Okay, I jumped ahead to a different section on uh limitations on bylaws, but um parking.
Off street parking is included.
Restaurants. Well, well.
So there isn't
Libraries.
Well, you have a place of public assembly, I think that's what would.
Oh, okay, one parking space for every four seats. Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I think that would cover theaters and places of public assembly.
So one question I asked last time was whether do you want to allow all these uses in all districts and, as I recall, you did. Because you, the thinking was that the state is gonna regulate them so heavily that they're not gonna allow something that would be grossly inappropriate, like putting it in the middle of a residential neighborhood or something like that.
Radio.
So can I hear a motion that we accept what Martha's put forward?
So we're we're just now, this is just for the document in Felsburg, November sixth, writing by my convention meeting. That's what we're looking at, is that the, is it?
Yeah.
That's the document you shared.
Yes.
That's what we've been going through, okay, okay. Um I just want to make sure we're not moving on to anything, anything else, other than what we've just discussed.
So it's just these pages and I remember there being quite a bit of conversation about owner occupied.
Right, I started with parking and limitations because I felt like we kind of got through those pretty well last time.
Alright, so.
All on the same page, we can move back um
But we couldn't take any actions last time, so I just wanted to get a feel that everybody's in agreement that what we've got now for the parking and and what was the other one?
Um the limitations.
The limitations, that everybody is fine with what those are now.
Okay, so specifically for clarity, so we don't have any any issues, parking and loading. And then limitations on bylaws is all we're discussing right now.
Parking and loading, the parking requirements, the definitions.
You know, there's.
The uses and the um five point three. And you want to add the emergency shelters.
Well, that's per state.
You have to.
Yeah, but I'm just clarifying that yes, that's gonna go in.
Yep.
And uh bike. That's the, that's uh that under the optional language.
Include that, yeah.
So do I hear a motion that we're accepting all these changes?
On those two sections?
Yeah.
Yes. I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Well, just remember, we're just an advisory board.
Who made the motion originally?
Mark made the motion, I seconded it.
So then we can go back to um business, home business and accessory dwelling, if you want to go back to those, I I also sent out since the last meeting a draft section on short term rentals. More for discussion than an expectation that you're gonna.
Okay, but now we've covered everything that was in the last meeting that we couldn't take action on, right?
No.
No.
Now, that that's why I wanted to clear, because we have, we have one page, two pages, three pages, four pages, five pages, six pages, and we only just approved the last
The last two.
Two pages.
Right, okay.
And we skipped over the initial, what, three, four pages?
Yeah. So I'm going back now to the home based business.
Yes.
And the only thing that I changed that um that's different from last time was you did talk about moving number four from home occupation into home business. That was that it shall result in no external evidence of the enterprise such as noise, smoke, dust, odors, heat, glare, electrical disturbances, power voltage variations or light disruptions, set for permitted signs.
And that wasn't in home based businesses before?
That was not in home videos business, but it was in home occupation.
Okay.
Seemed like there was consensus to add that.
Mm hmm, yes.
And the the, I think we got the consensus on parking. And then the, so the mainy main sticking point still was number three, occupy an accessory structure located on the lot or a portion of the dwelling that includes less than forty percent.
Okay, hold on, so what we need to do is to get a an opinion or a vote on adding number four to the home based business. So let's get that much done. Do I make a motion that we put Martha's suggestion, number four? About the noise, dust, smoke, whatever, that we add that to the home based business?
I would, I would agree that that's a good uh good approach to uh keeping peace in the neighborhood.
So was that a second, Kevin?
I made a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, so that's done. Now Martha, what's next?
Number three.
People, actually, before we jump to that, I'm noticing that number five says comply with section three point eight signs and if you mention the signs up in number four, you don't need to mention it again and.
Yeah, five is duplicated.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, so number three, the occupying accessory structure or a portion of the lot that includes less than forty percent of its total room space. You you had agreed on the forty percent, I think there was not necessarily agreement on whether an entire accessory structure could be occupied or a portion of an accessory structure. Or maybe you want to say one accessory structure, if there's multiple one, you don't want them all involved, I I you know, I don't know.
Well, it's really hard because, you know, we're such a small community and there's so many variables. You know, I understand the the intent to define it, but it where do you go, where's the, where's the limitations with defining? A garage can be, a barn can be, forty percent of a house can be.
It's hard to know when you don't know what the use is gonna be.
Absolutely.
Proposed, so.
That's my issue with any regulation, it's like there, it's not like we're in the middle of a city where it's sort of cookie cutter, you know, we're in a very unique rural environment. And there's just going to be so many variables that pop up and every property is not equally developed.
And it is gonna go to conditional.
It's going to be a conditional, right, yeah.
Right.
So I'm not sure if it it's worth it's pursuing that, if it's going to be, we'll we'll know if they're going to be operating a three thousand square foot accessory uh accessory structure, uh you know, next to a a small house, then then I think that's gonna come up in the conditional use, whether or not the property is really being used for, you know, a home based business or a full out commercial enterprise, so.
And I believe I said this in the last meeting, if if there is a conditional use and there is a hearing, then it gives us and the applicants a lot of time to sort through the details and understand the impacts on the neighborhood, the townspeople can get involved, the local residents, the adjoining property owners. Um, you know, we all know how important it is to people you know, who live next door to other people doing things, we've had a good example of that, so I think the hearing will resolve that and to split all of us into further definition, I think is really a waste of our time.
Yeah, I mean related to that, one thing I would note about your current regulations is all these things, noise, smoke, dust, odor, heat. As far as I could tell, um you don't have currently a separate section on performance standards, which is what these are usually under. And it's, you know, they, instead of just listing them, you really should list them with some sort of a measurable standard. Um often, the simplest is to say detectable at the property line. And that would protect a neighbor, you know, if it's really loud at the property line and their house is right there. You know, that's.
Like in a village setting.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
I agree.
Um so we could add a section on performance standards that's more specific than what you currently have, which.
So we're we're back to speaking about number four.
Right. Uh, yes, yes, um.
Because performance standards has nothing to do with number three, which we were just discussing.
Right, but if you want, if everyone's okay with number three as is and you were talking about conditional use, if you add performance standards, it kind of gives you, when you get to the conditional use hearing and you're talking to them.
To work through the details.
To work through those details of what, how it might impact a neighbor and it was.
Well, I like that idea.
No noise, um then you go to the property line and say.
Well, I think we're going to generate more public input and peace of living and reading if we have a collaborative experience instead of just having all these rules that's a, you know, no, and then someone has to enforce the rules, which no one's going to enforce the rules because we're not large enough to enforce the rules. And then you have, you know, all this unsettled you know, behavior amongst the residents, so I think the more we can work towards simplifying it, the better.
Right, I'm I'm hoping that, I mean, I know adding performance standards is adding another thing.
Right.
But I think that does simplify because it gives you
Guidelines.
Right now you have what's they might be called standard or standard list discretion, which the courts frown on. If you just say we're gonna regulate these things, noise, smoke, dust, et cetera, but you haven't told the applicant or the neighbors how.
Mm hmm.
And if you're, you're, if you're how you're measuring that is, okay, if it's not detectable from the property line, then we're not gonna worry about it, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes go into meters, you know, they get decibel meters and they say, you know, fifty decibels, sixty decibels, um you may not want to get that complicated.
So I I agree with that, so we're speaking specifically about number four, so
Right.
Do we want to add that to number four?
Um I would put it in a just, in a separate section, because there's other places where you mentioned noise, but again, not necessarily specific. Specifically. Like you did with the wastewater permit, so now you can just refer to section three point one one in elsewhere in the document, if you have these performance standards listed out, you can say.
That sounds like a really lengthy process, performance standard, I mean, it's just like pages and pages and pages of performance standards.
Um usually it's just. Um, usually it's just, it's, I can give you an example that's not excessive. I'm assuming you don't.
I mean, I would be interested in seeing that because, you know, the, the, the noise base, you know, we, we don't, it currently in town have a noise ordinance and, um. I think in some situations, we need, we, we, we need something. We need some substance to be able to attach to that. Um. Um. There's one thing that hasn't been added too. Are, are hours allowed to be, hours of operation allowed to be?
I mean, under, under conditional use, and, and, you know, we can talk about that in more depth at some point, um. You can, you can add conditions.
Doesn't the state have a general regulation for noise though?
Conditional use doesn't specifically spell out what those conditions are, but it does give you some pretty broad latitude. And then, you know, it's got the usual things like the character, the neighborhood and traffic and so on and so forth that you look at with any conditional use. But you're allowed to attach reasonable conditions to implement, um. The purpose of the plan, the purpose of the district, the purpose of your town plan, you know. So that, to ensure that it's. You can also pull, pull things from act two fifty and include them as conditional use criteria if you want to.
I just want to say I'm, I'm in favor of, of performance standards. I do not want to see something like Peacefield Farm happen in, uh, Reading. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that debacle in Woodstock. Um, I think guidelines, sideboards and anything that can guide not only the planning commission and zoning board of adjustment, but the people who would want to get involved or need to get involved with, uh, decision making process, then uh, those would be good as long as, uh, they are succinct and not a, uh, uh, an excerpt from, uh, War and Peace, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of examples out there. There's the simple detectable at the property line, which is probably simplest.
Simplest.
One, you'd use something like that. And then, like I said, there's decibels and you gotta buy a decibel meter and, you know, the, I mean. For small towns, I don't think they tend to go in that direction. But that's up to you.
Well, and, and I, you know, I come back to the question of, you know, why are we having issues in town where there's complaints from residents where these things are happening? Because I haven't heard of any.
Well, I think this gives you some tools in terms of conditional use. If you're saying, well, I don't know, does it really matter? Or, you know, we don't know how big the building is going to be, what type of business it's going to be. So if you specify, you know, that none of that necessarily matters if you can't detect it at the property. And if you have performance standards that say that, then whether it's a three thousand square foot barn that they're using for their business or a five hundred square foot garage, it's like that's not the key factor. The key factor is can you detect the noise or the vibration or the smoke or whatever it is at the property line? And if you can, then. You know, you can say, well.
They're speaking about, um, like neighbors settling it, which is like great. I mean, that would be everybody's wish list, but I do know of a situation down the road for me where there ended up two neighbors, one sued the other. So I think to have a guideline, uh, is helpful to kind of avoid those situations. Where it has to.
I, I think this is something that's been bothering me for a, a few meetings now. I think you could save your comments for public comments because you're the recording secretary and I think you should maybe focus on being the recording secretary. And then when public comments come up, you can voice your opinion.
Well, I'm sorry Stacy, but I was told that I can make comments during the meeting.
Anybody can make a comment during the meeting.
Oh, anybody can?
Sure.
Well, that's not what you said three or four meetings ago when you were trying to define this time for people to make public comments.
Right, well, what, but if there's a comment about what we're discussing, fine. If it's a general comment, it can wait until the end. If it's about what we're discussing, then yeah, anybody in the public can make a comment.
Oh, that's.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all right.
As long as it's pertinent to what we're discussing, that's fine.
As long as, I, that's not how it was laid out to us. So.
Well, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Uh, clearly to me, communication is a currency of democracy. And this is what we're trying to have here in the town government, okay?
Alogi accepted.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear what she said.
I didn't.
Okay, we can, let's, 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 let's move on.
Yeah.
Um.
All right, so, so back to, or we're going to create a performance standard.
I'll send you some examples.
Okay. And then number three, what did we decide to do with number three?
I don't know that you decided, but you were discussing.
Okay.
I think, I think as long as we, we have a commitment to the performance uh, measurements there, um, I think, I think that number three is okay as is. Um. You know, the proof is in the pudding in terms of the accessory structure. If the accessory structure is going to turn into factory, well, then it's going to be creating X, Y, and Z. That's going to be, that's going to come up in the conditional use.
The hearing. I agree.
So we want to delete number three?
I thought you wanted.
No, no, just keep, leave it as is.
Okay.
If that, that says, I don't, I can hear Kevin.
Yeah, I agree. Kevin, what do you think? Kevin's gone.
Sorry, I was on mute. The advice is to accept number three, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I'm fine with that. With the, with the understanding that number four, we will be developing a little more around the performance measures.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so accessory dwellings. Okay, we'll skip past your current language, propose, propose new language, um. There was a lot of discussion about number one, the accessory dwelling unit is located within or pertinent to a single family dwelling on an owner occupied lot. And, uh, number five, neither the single family home nor the accessory dwelling unit is offered as a short term rental.
The owner occupied lot does not exist in our current language, correct?
This is, um, the state language.
Owner occupied lot is in the state language?
The state language, it doesn't require you to, it, it, well, let me go back and find the state. No, by law, shall have the effect of excluding as a permitted use one accessory dwelling unit that is located within or pertinent to a single family dwelling on an owner occupied lot. So if it's on an owner occupied lot, you have to allow it as a permitted use. But that doesn't mean that you can't also allow one that's on a lot that's not owner occupied. If that makes sense. You can be less restrictive, but you have to at least allow it for owner occupied lots.
I see. And, but I think we were, this is why I'm surprised that this is coming from the state because I thought the discussion that we were having was that we need to define what is owner occupied. There seems to be like an owner occupied, I mean, is that an, is that a LLC? Is that a full time resident? Is it a part time resident? Is it a non-resident? So, you know, an owner is an owner is an owner, but I, I, I think the language is trying to get that the owner is there. It's occupying the lot. It's, it's living at, to what, to what degree, um.
Right, and, and yes, and the state hasn't.
So I'm just wondering what the state's definition of owner occupied.
And, and they don't, so. Um.
But they're saying if it is, is owner occupied without a definition, then it is permitted automatically.
There's impacts to allow.
You have to allow it.
Permitted use. So hopefully maybe in the next legislative session, they'll define owner occupied. In the meantime, I think I had offered.
Yeah, you did offer a definition of owner occupied. And again, it's like, you know, you can, it's like Mark was saying, there's so many possibilities as an owner. And we could sit here, you know, for the next two years trying to define us. And as long as we're aligning with the state, I think that's the direction we should travel.
I mean, and again, you've got another, you've got more than a year before you finish this. So if you want to put a bookmark here, see if the state comes up with something more specific during the legislative session. Um, we can come back to it in May or June, um.
I'm just surprised when their lexicon that there isn't a definition. Um, because very specific, um, and I don't, I don't exactly know what it means. For some, it's, for some, they that, you know, the spirit is that that person lives there and then the ADU is the accessory, you know, the, the, the secondary piece, but. Yeah.
Don't some towns have it that it is associated with a homestead exemption or the Homestead Act or whatever? Or a registered voter in that town? Don't some of the towns put restrictions like that on?
Well, that would be a residence. You'd have to be.
Probably, I mean, I haven't looked at all the different options that are out there. I mean, I sent you guys something today that the LCT put out and they, and they said in their article, I mean, this is a fluid situation and towns are, everyone's throwing something at the wall, we'll see what sticks and we'll know more probably in six months when some of this stuff has gone through courts and Burlington's is going through the court system right now, so.
So I mean, at this point, do we leave it and then we accept that this is, this is up for total interpretation?
Yeah, so fluid.
Right.
I mean, it, until, I guess, until there is more specifics, we say.
I would think that waiting six months to see if something more clear comes out.
I agree. This, you know, we're, we now have what, two, three meetings about these points? And the state could come along and do, everything you discussed is now different. And we've just wasted all this time.
Right. Yeah, same with short term rentals.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm fine, I, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with accepting this, knowing that I'm comfortable with interpreting it, which I think legally is, is, um, very easy to do with what, what it owner occupied is.
Right. I mean, I would, before you finalize these and send them to the select board.
Right.
I would revisit and see.
But the owner occupied piece, that, that is the state language. So we need to adopt this for something more rigid in order to be in compliance with with what, with what we're doing.
Right.
So this, this is the minimum unless we add, you know. If, if, if you, if someone addresses this, does have an owner occupied lot that also holds residence, resident status, that's, that's, that's more, uh.
That would be adding more.
That's more, that's more restrictive.
Than what the state.
Than what the state is saying.
Leastest.
So in that case, I would say I would not want to add more restrictions, parameters around rules that. Uh, Martha, I have a question. Is, is the idea here to, uh, ensure that there is not going to be a whole bunch of Airbnbs, uh, whereas there could be, uh, affordable housing, uh, as the primary goal of, of making dwelling units themselves? In other words, are we going to continue to, uh, become, uh, a park rather than a place for people to live? People to cut somebody else's lawn, uh, to service a faulty septic system? Those types of jobs? Is, is it really, uh, a deeper subject than, uh, we really think?
I think the goal for the state was simply to create more affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I think that's proven by what's going with, um, Kathy mentioned earlier in Windsor. You know, there's an applicable site that could be used for affordable housing and you know, Mark is behind it and, and offering money, the state's behind it offering money, so that's all great. But in Reading, it, it's not applicable.
Well, well, I mean, this would be saying that if someone in Reading who lives on their property wants to put in an accessory dwelling, they can do it.
Absolutely.
Pardon?
You can turn your garage into a, and or place the limits on it.
Right, right.
When you put more restrictions on it, they're not going to do it. So you need more housing, so that's.
Right, that's, that's the point, yeah, yeah. Now, number five is not something that's required to be in there by the state. That was based on what I was hearing from the planning mission last, you know, February and March, um. I sent you earlier, um, a draft short term rental section, again, uh, for discussion, and I wouldn't spend a ton of time on that either. For the same reason, you don't know what's been, comes out of this in the next.
So much going on with this topic.
I mean, I mean, number five, I would, I would, I would strike that completely. I mean, it's, you know, in, in one way, we're trying to say if there is going to be, short term rentals aren't going away. We've discussed, if there are going to be short term rentals, it seemed like there were some board members, we're not all over on the board anymore, that said, if we're going to have that, then the person needs to be, it needs to be an owner occupied where, you know, it's not just a circus, it's the, 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 the owner is there on the site to monitor that. Um, I mean, this here is saying no, you know, neither. And I mean, ADUs are offering, they offer a solution for some people and in some places, but it's not going to get us out of the housing prices or the economy of skills to build these things are going to be there, so.
The problem with number five also is there's no enforcement.
There's no enforcement until there is a, you know, there's some sort of short term rental, um. Now, or, ordinance or, 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 or registry, um. I mean, it would be interesting if there was some, some sort of registry, just to see how many people there are that are doing it. How often it's being done? What are the average values of the homes that are being rented and see from an actual snapshot, what is? Is, is it really impacting the available housing stock? Why shouldn't it? Why shouldn't it? You make an accessory dwelling unit and rent it out to a permanent resident. Well, uh, I mean, I, I, I mean, Kevin, that's really, that's really nice, but then in some, some ways it becomes a charity. I, I wouldn't afford to be a charity and build a three hundred thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar ADU and rent it at what is considered market rate if I have. You don't need three hundred thousand dollars to make an accessory dwelling unit. If you have an existing building.
On, it, it really, we had this conversation in the last meeting.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, you.
I mean, there's, I, I would say there's a reason why people are not building it. I, 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 I would love to build it, but I would have to
There's no.
Update the septic, I'd have to, I'd have to do all sorts of, all sorts of modifications and it's just, it's the economy of scales are not there unless you were getting some sort of major tax break or some sort of major, you know, subsidy or grants, but you know, the, the grants that are available from local places are, I mean, they're relatively small.
Fifty thousand dollars max. And I think you also have to look, you know, just to put it in context, you have to look at what is affordable. And I, I believe they're building a complex in Burlington. I just saw it on the news before heading out tonight. It's like a, a one-bedroom affordable is a thousand to thirteen hundred dollars a month. Well, that's just not. You, you, if you spend even a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an A D U at a thousand dollars, thirteen hundred dollars a month, you're not going to, it, it's like Mark said, charity. And not many people have that ability.
Yeah, I mean.
It's, it's, it's very complex.
It's very.
It's wrong and it's, and it's everywhere. It's in every, it's in every place. Uh, in the country.
Everyone's complaining about it.
I mean, if someone has an existing septic that's big enough already and they don't have to invest in it and they already have a structure, you know, it's in good shape, good big garage or something. You know, maybe they can do it and it's not going to be.
Right. And I think that's where the fifty thousand dollar grant comes into play. If, if you have a sort of space in your house, let's say a bedroom over here with the bathroom and you can put a wall up, then the fifty thousand, if the septic is up to par plays. But if you're trying to do an independent structure or add a wing or whatever to make it happen, it, it's just not. It's not affordable.
Yeah.
And also, I mean, a lot of these are, a lot of these are geared more towards urban environments that already have the, that already have the septic system. They just need a little more relaxed zoning around setbacks and lot size and density. Uh, we don't have those restrictions here. We just have, you know.
All right. So we're, are we, what are we doing on number five?
Are you striking number five?
I vote to strike it.
I also vote to strike it.
What's it? Is that a motion?
I move to strike it. I motion to strike it.
I'll second, I'll second that, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin?
Nay.
I'm going to say nay also. I don't like the part about, uh, applicable requirements for the zoning district. So that's one that's going to be relooked.
I'm sorry, Kathy, can you repeat? What, what, what was it that you said?
It says all the applicable requirements for the zoning district in which it's located. I think some of those are kind of what you need to look at. So the, the state health regulations for the water supplier and sewers, I see that as being an enforcement issue.
I think we're talking about this, this one, uh, number five under, this is under four point one accessory dwelling units?
Mm-hmm.
Number five, neither the single-family home nor the accessory dwelling unit is offered as a short-term rental.
That's not what I'm looking at. I'm looking at something else. I'm looking at this. This is. Maybe that's the new way we're on the moving right here, this one here. I'm still going to vote no.
That's so. Well, we'll move on to the short-term language.
Last one is the number six. I thought you guys were okay with all of them except number five, if we were. Okay. Want to re, look at five after, you see if there's any more regulations that come out? Yeah, I think waiting six months or so to look at this again. Yeah.
I mean, I can't see that the state is ever going to say that you can't offer an A D U that you're paying out of pocket and paying taxes on that is not going to be, unless the town has a short-term. I mean, if the town has a short-term rental ordinance that restricts it, then there you go. That's, that's what it is. But we're just saying that, you know, if the town does not have a short-term rental, uh, ordinance that you, you can't, if you have an A D U on the property, you can't rent either one.
And this, you know, they also help address it, this, this action on.
I mean, I, I mean, it's just, I guess, there will never be an A D U ever built that could ever possibly be, you know, affordable, uh, so just, I guess, no A D Us are better than some A D Us in this way.
I mean, yes. Short-term rentals, short, short-term rentals can be helpful. They can help someone afford a home. If, you know, it doesn't cost them an arm and a leg, but we're in and help cover the cost of, you know, taxes or whatever, mortgage. So they can be helpful for affordable housing in that way. Um, they also often create problems for neighbors, you know, they're noisy or they pack too many people into them. You know, that's where you have to put some guardrails on.
So where, I'm, I'm sorry, I think we're, we seem to be jumping all over. Kathy's on one page and I'm on another and so we're so I. We voted on number five, right? It was a tie.
Right, right.
Okay, now where are we going?
Um, a separate document that I sent to you all.
So why did this get sent to us? Why is this a topic of conversation?
Um, last night I, I had jotted down a note that you wanted to look at some draft short-term rental regulations for the zoning.
I don't remember that.
We, I mean, we're constantly talking about it. Some, some board members want to, some board members do not want to, um. Uh, i- i- if, I mean, if, if, if short-term rentals are such an issue in, in Reading, then I think we should. I mean, I think we can explore something, but I don't see any data. I don't see anything other than just, you know, I mean, I mean, you, you, you can be on what I would consider the right side of history and say, let's, let's, let's let's get rid of short-term rentals. Let's, let's create affordable housing. Let's do all these sort of things, but, you know, unless, unless we're going to be providing, uh, you know, protective covenants on, on, on housing and we're going to be providing tax incentives or I, I mean, we don't, we don't have the funds to be able to do that in town. I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how we're going to prom- promote affordable housing by just simply saying no to this.
Right. But what I was trying to say before, as far as the pros of, of, uh, short-term rentals being affordable. Say someone can't really afford to buy a house, but they see the house has a big garage, if I buy this house, I can, and they're carpenters, so they can do a lot of work themselves. I can convert this garage to an A D U and do a short-term rental and that'll help me afford this house that I can't otherwise afford. So short-term rentals are, you know, it's kind of a double-edged sword where sometimes you can see them as taking away long-term rentals, but on the other hand, sometimes they're making housing that wouldn't be affordable otherwise, affordable by providing an additional stream of income for the person who buys the product.
And honestly, nobody's provided any proof at all that the S V Rs are a detriment to the community. I know they're helping the communities, they're helping people pay their mortgage bill, they're helping people pay their medical bills, whatever. There's been no facts, no data that are detrimental to the staff that I've heard. And I've been coming to this meeting for a few years now, I've been working with one legitimate anti-technical.
I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, I mean, it's very different where, you know, in Boston, where I live part-time, there are Chinese corporations or American corporations that come in and buy dozens, hundreds of apartments. And now it's happening across the country with houses that they're using for rent. I mean, that's something that, that needs to be regulated. That's something that needs to, to stop. But, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't see it here, right? Um, yeah, I think we need to focus, I'm sorry, Mark.
No, no, that's. I think we need to focus on Reading. There's no complaints, there's no issues. And you could go worldwide here, you could say hedge funds are buying twenty million dollar houses all across the world and leaving them vacant, which is happening. L A, New York, Spain, all over the place, just leaving them vacant. Whole apartment buildings, they're buying whole apartment buildings and leaving them empty. So we could talk about that all day long, but it's not going to do us any good in Reading because it's not our issue.
Right. I mean, it's a bigger issue in ski towns in Vermont.
Right, right. And they're addressing it. Killington, Okimolelo, Stowe, they're all addressing it. They have to address it, otherwise it would get out of hand, it'd go crazy, but it's not happening in Reading.
But the, the one thing that your regulations say that pretty much also the regulations should say is that if, if a use is not specifically authorized by these regulations, then it's prohibited. Apparently your regulations have nothing about short-term rentals. So technically, right now, they're prohibited. Someone can't have a legal short-term rental in Reading because there's no provision.
So that should be changed, right?
And that may be what prompted the discussion about drafting something to consider, uh, so.
I'm in favor for waiting for the state to make this decision for us, because I think there's litigation, there's legislation, there's it's all in the pipe and it's all going to be, just that we could discuss this one and a half page document for the next ten meetings and they could come along and change it on us.
Which I wouldn't recommend. I was just, I was just putting this out there for brief discussion, so, you know, you can maybe think about it. Or, I mean, we don't even have to discuss it, you can look at it.
The only thing, yeah, and that, and that's good. The, the only thing I remember you saying in past months was the only thing we need to do for the grant is to
More affordable housing.
Just do more affordable housing and at least make a statement about S T Rs without any further definition. I think that's the request, right? Is that you just need to.
You, you need to make your zoning regulations compliant with your town plan. And your town plan does have a a paragraph about short-term rentals. And it's, it does mention owner occupied, you know, that they should be on occupied lots, so.
You, I, I, I mean, I, I know that that then involves going really into the zoning, but if we, if, if we, if we really are are interested in creating, you know, uh, affordable, the, 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 I don't know, the, the, the wish for something sort of affordable, then I think we need to look at we need to look at, um, creating more, uh, districts with small lots. More, more one-acre lots in, in areas because.
That would make the thing.
That's what, that's what's going to bring people in, retirees, families, people who cannot afford a very large valuable building lot, parcel, um. These are the sort of things that will.
There's only two little tiny spaces in town that allow one acres only. One out in South Reading and then in the village.
Mm-hmm.
And I think if we opened up some of the five acre restrictions to one.
That's a great.
And, I mean, and, and the, you know, and the, the, the R ten, the R. Twenty-five, I, I, I think, I think that, I don't think some people have to be fearful of a one acre.
Well, e- e- exactly.
In, in the area of.
Yes, because there's, it's ledge a swamp.
Mm-hmm.
And so some of the twenty-five acre areas cannot be subdivided to anything that's going to be amenable to.
Some, the, the, I've heard this argument, but also when some of these very large zoning districts were created, there was also we're talking in the sixties, people on the board who wanted to look at a beautiful, untouched view and created restrictive zoning in certain areas and large, large parcels to, to, to accommodate their, you know, their their views. So, um, in some ways, the zoning hasn't been kind to
To everyone.
To, to, to a lot of people, or at least if we're making an emphasis on affordable housing to people who, um, to build something.
So can we move on from this and maybe bring on to the next agenda? Looking at areas where we can create one-acre lots out of five-acre parcels to make those.
Okay, are existing one-acre villages and do you want to expand them out?
Yeah, yeah. I, I think that's a great idea. An absolutely great idea.
The state's kind of funny where they, you know, for decades, they've been talking anti-spro, you know?
Can't have a both-way thought.
I know, I, I mean, it's the same with, you know, I'd have more housing in the downtowns and then it floods and then it's like, can't have any housing in the downtowns because it's all flood zone.
Right.
Um, but.
But that's, that's very, you know, no one should be building or developing in a flood zone.
Right. Right, so.
I mean, it, it, there's, i- i- it would almost be sort of an interesting concept if, you know, we're saying that every, every home gets to create one A D U, maybe every lot gets to create a small lot that can be, you know, that they can sell or whatever is market rate to be able to create some more.
You're talking about the ability to subdivide?
To subdivide, yeah.
Well, I think that's what we would address. We would look at the five-acre zoning and say, okay, now instead of a big five acres, it'll be one acres.
I don't know what, um. So there's still septic issues.
Sure. Well, I think, and then that gets into the conversation about affordable and, and Kevin's brought this up several times. You can build something anywhere.
Right.
As long as you get the state's permission. And if that means a big huge mound system on a one-acre lot for your two-bedroom house, you can do that. It's just going to cost you a hundred thousand dollars for that element alone. So then it becomes not too affordable.
Right.
A hundred thousand for a mound system?
A huge mound, a, a, a mound system, I mean.
I didn't think it was that much.
Yeah, you're off base. You're off base there on the, that number.
Well, what's, what's the number? And I, I may be off base. I, I, we had neighbors who spent eighty-five thousand on their septic system. So. Yeah.
Yeah, it's expensive. But, but, I mean, if you look at the, if you look at salaries and you look at the definitions of affordable, I mean, you know, so, somebody who was making X amount of thousands of dollars could still be qualifying for a two hundred and fifty, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar mortgage that could, you know, or, or construction loan combination that could do that. That's, 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 that's a lot different than a one million dollar home or a two million dollar. I mean, that's, um, that's, that's doable if the land is, if the land is the starting point.
So we have R R five, we have all these light blue areas in town that are R R five, from Hammondsville all the way up from Felkville to South Reading. So we could look at changing those zones to So we could look at changing those zones to R one. And then that would open up gonna be a huge discussion.
Yeah, I mean, also it gets along one oh six, I mean, you also have to talk about access management because you don't want, you know, twenty driveways in a row all coming out of the one oh six. Just created traffic.
Well, then there, that goes back to the state because the state regulates all the driveways along one oh six.
Right.
So for the people that move here because they want the rural area, creating higher density might not be, uh, something that they really like. Or then what other infrastructure is affected by it that has to be improved?
I didn't, I didn't hear the whole thing.
I'm saying.
Go ahead Jane, now we can hear you.
Okay, I said that, um, people move here. I know, like a lot of people that I know, really treasure the acres that they have. Um, and the rural quality that we have, so do we really wanna create more higher density, um, by changing the zoning? And then what other infrastructure gets affected by that?
Right, well, I mean, the.
Well, I think Mark's point in this discussion was to create smaller parcels.
I mean, we, we have in our zoning that if there is going to be some sort of development, that there is an encouragement to cluster it, share driveway, share utility, so that you have the larger, the larger area that is, you know, untouched woodland, field, what have you, um, and have the homes clustered, uh, to be less of a disruption, but, um.
Maybe, I mean, there are towns that are looking at things like pocket neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of like the one, there's like a group of five houses, I think, is that on one thirty-one? Right outside of Cavendish.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Like a little point yard development, um, you could look at some language to enable that and areas, so there's like one driveway off the road and then serving four or five houses on small lots, um.
And I think our, we have that already.
That's in the town plan, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's in the town plan now where you can create an HOA. You can create a homeowners association.
Right, but you have conservation subdivision where you, like, if you develop a twenty-five acre lot, then.
Like, they were trying to do it almost like, you know, like a, like a pizza pie where all the homes are in the lower section and then as they flare out, you know, th- th- you, you have the density of homes in one area. But if it's, you know, the, if it was going to be a, I don't know, two acre and there were five, there would be on ten acres, but the five houses would all be relatively close, but allow the bulk of the, I don't know, eight, nine acres, whatever it would be, to be remain woodland so that, um, the density is concentrated, uh, not sprawl.
Right. But I mean, I guess I'm thinking of like the five acre district, you know, allowing.
Well, I think, we're really, we're really caught, you know, it's, we're really caught in a very awkward spot because we wanna make more affordable dwellings. And then Jane's got a very good point, people buy property in Vermont because it's more rural and you don't have these clusters. So we're stuck in this and I think the, the country's stuck in this situation.
Well, I mean, I think a lot of people would be happy to live in a little neighborhood surrounded by, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
Area and they wouldn't mind having a half acre lot, uh.
Less headache.
Go out of your back door and hike into the woods or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, without having to own that, all that area around you. Um. So you wanna look at your districts?
Well, I doubt that would be my suggestion.
I just think if we're, if we're, if we're talking the talk that we actually care about, you know, uh, affordable housing and opportunities for younger people to be able to move in or older people to be able to downsize, then it's not going to be in an ADU that just has dozens of restrictions on it with no benefits, um, it's, it needs to be something that, you know, that, 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 that people are coming to and it's, it's, it's going to work for them.
Um. There needs to be a site suitability map, uh, for any of this discussion. Everything is going to depend on a soil slope, all of those intricacies of developing a piece of land. Uh, wild, quote unquote, wildlife corridors, restrictions on height, et cetera, so there has to be some sort of preliminary mapping prior to further discussion of one acre zoning. I'm not gonna put five houses on a rock pile and spend two hundred thousand dollars on a septic system. I would rather know what I'm getting into before I get into it. So, let's.
Well, I think, I, I think that's, I mean, I think, I think we need to give some people credit that they're gonna do their due diligence and that the person that is going to subdivide their parcel and provide a small, small parcel for sale is going to provide one that is going to actually.
Pretty, pretty good, uh, realtors out there, you should know that, Mark. That will sell you just about anything.
I was lucky to know a couple good ones, but, um, uh, but we have to, we have to give some people some, uh, you know, responsibility, uh.
Yeah, you could give somebody credit, I don't mean, mean to be a pessimist, but let's do some good planning before you start making maps.
Well, I, I mean, if you want to sell a small parcel, you're going to provide the best thing that's going to work for, it's going to work for a house, if not, it's gonna sit on the market. The things that don't work these days are the ones that are sitting in the market, so.
If you do get a sewer system in town that will enable more density in the village, I don't know where that stands at the moment.
No, it, we're, I mean, it's in the works and, and they're doing their feasibility and it's, it ties back into this conversation with the ser- the, um, survey that only what, forty-four percent or forty-four? How, I, I don't even know that, I can't, don't wanna be held accountable for what I say.
It was somewhere around forty, like, yeah, just under fifty percent.
But yeah, that's in the books.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the next, like we discussed earlier, the next is phase two and then we go from there. So where, where are we?
I think we're about ready to plan for January's meeting.
Okay.
First Monday in January is the first, which is New Year's Day. I suggest that we move our meeting to Tuesday, January second. That works?
Works for me.
That works for me.
You know, works for me.
And I'll be opening.
Sorry, sorry, it's Kevin, I was speaking over you, does January second work for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jane? Yes, okay. January second is. Other business? Public comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Perfect. We have adjourning at eight fifty-three.